I'll just stop it in first. What are you talking about? Something for your son, tell me your head. I just did my makeup.
Good evening, it's seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Losbrans, Cascade Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Losbrans.
Here.
Treasurer Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Article three, approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented this this evening. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook. Approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have one presentation tonight. Parks Director Melanie Mannion is here to present her quarterly report to the board. Director Mannion, welcome and please proceed.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. And it worked great. Can you hear me okay? It's a sound. Okay, great. These quarterly reports were started by the former Chair of our Committee, Parks Committee, Ginny Wanty, and I really appreciate the opportunity to continue that legacy on and give you a quick update of what has happened the last quarter in our parks. Again, some of these things have come before you, but others, you know, have just kind of been happening in the background. So I'll start off with my favorite project, which is dealing with the many years of deferred maintenance within our parks. Some of them are safety, some of them are aesthetics, and some of them are a combination of both. And this was enemy number one for me when I first started was the condition of some of our restrooms, some of them not even having toilet seats. And so we're working to upgrade those and to make them more aesthetic and pleasing. This is Tassel Park, which is almost complete. I did not get an updated photo because, I'm sorry, this is what it looked like, as you may remember. This is at mid restoration. Today they finished off the flooring and next week will be the new amenities that'll be in there. So very excited about that. Also attended the West Michigan Trails Summit, which has over a thousand miles of trails in West Michigan that connects communities all the way from Mason all the way down to Sagatuck and throughout. It's a very large area made up of many different partners. Cascade has not been an active partner in this, but Kent County Parks has. And they have a plan for expanding the Grand River Greenway, which is currently in both Ionia and also in Ottawa County. And so bringing those two together. The very interesting part of the summit was to learn that one of the most critical trails segments in the entire West Michigan area is right here in Cascade. We are the missing link. And so it's very exciting to see that that will hopefully be a target area, not only for Kent County Parks, but for all of West Michigan, which hopefully will come with funding. An important part to remember is part of the prioritization is connecting villages and communities. So this will be a way for, and I know I personally have taken a bike ride from Grand Rapids to Rockford to have some ice cream. So the idea is that we will have that same continuity happening between Lowell and Grand Rapids and Rockford and Cascade. You may remember when the Parks Plan was approved last year, a big part of that was a renovation of Cascade Rack Park. This park is very much dilapidated and in need of some attention. This year, we are very fortunate that ASO, the American Youth Soccer Organization, came to us and told us, in addition to the Grand, to the Rapids FC, that our fields were hazardous. And so they stepped forward and created a plan to realign our parks. So, or I'm sorry, our soccer fields to make them safer and also created an additional field. So we now have a practice field and three different play playing fields. They also have generously offered to help support us financially in the future to improve our soccer fields as well as the Rapids FC. We also have a new group called Soccer Shots, who is out there utilizing these fields. So this is surprisingly even growing sport. I thought soccer was already popular, but it's even more. I think they said they increased by 20% this year. So really needing to improve the fields and also expand them. Fortunately, this unfortunately, I was not able to last year because of all the different things that we were working on within the Parks Department to meet the goal of creating a mass, a new master plan for Cascade Rack in 2023. But we did put out an RFP and to seven different companies and received three different bids. One company really did an outstanding job and was head and shoulders above the rest. And so the Parks Committee selected Troyer Group as the company to create the new master plan for Cascade Rack. So you may be familiar, Mike Reese is our Parks Committee Chair. And when he accepted the chair position, he was, he was very hesitant, I'll be honest, because of the conflict of interest that might be seen between him being the chair and him wanting to submit this proposal. But I think he clearly demonstrated his vast understanding of the community and the stakeholders to this and the knowledge of the park. So I highly recommend if you do have any concerns about the choice of Troyer Group, to check out the last packet for the parks, because it laid, it had all three of those proposals. And you will see clearly that the experience that they, that that company has and also the commitment to it was outstanding. In addition to that, he is partnering with Native Edge, which is the company that we're using here at Friendship Park. So again, another org company that we really trusted. And he was really the only one that they looked at, looking at one of the issues, which was watershed management on the site. You may notice we have some watershed issues there and utilizing native plants will be a big solution to that. So you will be getting a call from him and all of you will be as well to call out for feedback on what we want to see there in the future and what the park needs. And then we'll create a phased process for implementing that plan. We will create all the different things that can happen out there and then create a phased process of what we can do in 2025 and then again in 2026.
Does, does the acceptance of his bid require board approval?
No, it is both below the threshold of financial, for financial reasons.
Then just as a member of the board, when you talk about the conflict of interest, can you go through the process, like disclosure, that kind of stuff, just to make us feel good? And then also, if you were to take out the experience and the background, but simply look at the cost, you know, the estimate, what he's charging, the work that he's promising and the specifics, how does that hold up to the other two bids?
Absolutely. So as far as the conflict of interest, he did submit the conflict of interest form that we require. Additionally, he was not obviously part of the selection committee that brought it to the Parks Committee. And he left the room during the discussion period during the voting. So he wasn't present while we had the discussion and and voted. As far as price, there was, they were all at 20,000, except for one was a little less than that. But we weighed heavily on the fact that Troyer Group was the only company that created a detailed budget of what that $20,000 would go towards. All of the, both of the others just stated their price. You know, this project will cost $20,000 and it was like this two sentence paragraph. Troyer Group created a detailed budget process of how many man hours was going to be spent on each part of the scope of work. And we really appreciated that transparency and also understanding that even though he will be subcontracting with Native Edge, knowing what would be spent on this particular part of the project and what will be spent with Native Edge and and other subcontractors. Did that address your question? Okay, thank you. Um, okay. And the exciting part of this, well, maybe not the exciting part, but because of the need of Cascade Rack, right? We have this vast need for active recreation. And also the condition of the park, people recognize the need for this investment. We've already had several people offering financial involvement. So again, three or both of the soccer organizations. We also, as you may remember, we have a donation from Mr. Robinson, who, this is from the dedication of the playground that he helped fund. And we believe that strongly that we have a good, we will have a good grant for Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund. We believe that this will be a strong contender in that process as well. Next, very excited to announce that Kent Garden Club has accepted the museum landscaping as their 2024 project. And as you can tell by the photo, it's needed. This too will be a phased project. This year, they are hoping to get around the museum first, as you can see, as much needed because of the fact that we do, the Historical Society does have openings there for people to come and visit. We want to make sure that we spruce this up and and make it look landscaped. They will also this year be moving the flag over closer to the building, along with the memorial stone, to make it more noticeable when people actually come. Because right now, you know, you are in a car driving by, you can't read that plaque. This way it'll be closer to the museum, people will be able to see it, especially when there's activities there. It'll be lit up, the flag will be there. And then, and some people are really excited about this, we will be replanting the Christmas tree at the top of the hill.
About that, just a real Christmas.
A real Christmas tree at the top of the hill. So that is all phase one. And we will be working with OHM to make sure that it coordinates with the rest of the village development. Quickly, maybe you've already seen, White Cliff Park is moving quickly along. This last week, they put in the play structures. Again, these are the the younger, three through five year olds, and then the older, the six through 13, I think it is, or 50, because I'm on this. This will be finished up hopefully in the next, by Friday this week. They'll be putting in the engineered wood to be able to, for safety. And then again, the the dedication is on May 18th. If anyone is interested, next Monday, we will have staff and volunteers out there putting in the pathways. So if you want to come and be part of this park, I know several of you have already been there and have put your sweat into it. We'd love to have the volunteers come help with that.
What is the time for that?
That is an excellent question. I believe it's at 9:00 AM, but if you are interested, let me know. And of course, our Friendship Park, again, moving very quickly, ahead of schedule, as you probably can tell, the warm weather has allowed them to work throughout the winter. The ground never froze. These are the structures that were moved from Memorial Park to the Friendship Park so that they will be utilized more. We wanted to put them in a place where there are more children and what better place than outside the library? So they have been refurbished and hopefully will be utilized a lot more at this new location. Additionally, the pavilion is moving very quickly. This was earlier this week, I think it's even much further along than that. The plantings will be going in in May. And the fountain is going to be going in very soon as well. So we are very much on track for the dedication on June 29th. And again, that date was chosen to make sure that our contractors and our other participants can be part of that dedication. So we hope to have you all there because this is a pretty exciting project, I think, for everyone. Any questions on that one before I move? Okay. And last but not least, probably the thing I am most proud of, that I have not really had to do anything for, because we have an outstanding volunteer coordinator in Janine Hyville. And thank you all for allowing us to be creative with our positioning and allowing her to have this position, because in her small amount of hours that she is given each week, she has been able to do 157 hours of volunteer labor in this quarter, which is pretty impressive if you think about the fact that it was winter. So, and that was over 10 different workdays. We have a solid team of volunteers that come every week. And then on the weekends, we have a different set of volunteers that come. They're hardworking and just this week, which is not included in the quarterly report, they pulled 700 pounds of garlic mustard in one week. So doing outstanding work and it just shows the dedication of this community to our parks and our natural areas. And with that, I will not take any more of your time, but I will take any questions.
Just have to say, good work. Great work.
Yeah.
Thanks. I know you have a lot of people pulling at you and a lot of requests and a lot of people have pet projects that fall under parks or potential recreation, but what I don't think people realize is that before you can even, you haven't even really been able to be the Parks Director yet, because you have been the default for like making up for 10 years of lack of maintenance. So thank you, you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you for approving the new position, because by having the new facilities, buildings and grounds person, that will free me up to do a lot more with the parks. So hopefully you'll see programming, actually.
Awesome.
If I can just make a comment on behalf of Melanie to the, to everybody at home that's listening, she's a one man show. It's just her and the Parks Department. So hats off to you, Melanie, for doing such a great job and getting the parks where they are now in just a short period of time. So it's exciting to see what's happened so far and what's going to happen in the next few years.
Yeah, I don't think people realize that our Parks Department is you. Thank you.
Thank you.
People want to not pay tax, any more taxes than they have to, right? Fiscal, and then, but they want everything now and then they just, but don't raise my taxes. So I don't know how you balance it, but you've done a great job. Article five, public comments. Now is the time for public comments on anything that's on tonight's agenda that is not scheduled for a public comment, or excuse me, a public hearing. Tonight's agenda items include village sidewalk repairs, Metro Cruise, a gym facility at the old Bed Bath and Beyond Building, potential cemetery at the end of 52nd Street, planning department fees update, and also a hotel licensing ordinance. Anyone wishing to comment on those items, now is the time. Please state your name and address for record keeping, limit your comments to three minutes. And if you want to comment on something else, we'll have another opportunity later on in the meeting. Mr. Whitley, good evening.
Good evening. Chuck Whitley, 5030 Sequoia Drive, Southeast. I wasn't planning on speaking first here, but in looking at the material, there was the Cascade Inspection Services. And it reminded me of a story, which I will be very, very, very brief with. Bought my home in 2007, the inspector came, plugged in the little device in the bathroom and it didn't go off. So there was no protection from the ground fault. So fast forward to a year ago, my neighbor was having some well issues and I got involved with her house and the outlets on the outside of her house were not protected. So following up, looked at the outlet in her bathroom and all the wires were connected to the top instead of two to the top and everything else to the bottom. And so there was no downstream protection. So the kind of the thought is that, you know, this is the thing that I would think that, you know, the, the inspection process would would get is that someone wired up a basic safety device improperly to where it did not work. So, you know, I know there's qualified immunity, which, you know, limits, you know, going back to the inspector or whatever, if somebody gets killed and, you know, a situation with bad stuff. But, you know, there's, you know, a sample of two, I had, you know, two different houses where they were unsafe, you know, because of miswiring. So just, you know, I, I, you know, just came up with, because of the Cascade Inspection, you know, being listed as part of that report there. If someone has a an Eagle Scout that wants a project for $20, you can buy a device that plugs into outlets and you could find out if you could save your neighbors, you know, from being exposed to dangerous actual shock. So that's all I've got. I wasn't planning on doing anything and so that that's all I've got. Thank you.
When we get to the agenda item, can we explain that this is for planning fees, not inspection services?
Okay.
And also that we don't know, you don't pull a permit?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
So this is for open for anything on the list. My name is Derek Smith. I currently reside in the Comstock Park, but I'm here representing Max and Elaine Smith on 6745 Second Street. I don't know how long you guys have been in Cascade, but I grew up at that house. I'm opposed to the cemetery, only because I grew up in those forests, I grew up in woods, I grew up riding up and down 52nd Street when it used to go through, when the sludge dump was there. Talking about the parks today, I remember when there was a rest stop there and the park was like maybe a tennis court or two. And so I've watched this township, this area grow up. And, excuse me, trying not to do this, but I have three boys of my own. My wife and I have been together for eight years, she has two boys. My kids have grown up in that area. They played in that area, they ran through that area. I have a grandchild on the way in about a month and a half. I know I'm only 35, right? But so I don't know what's going to happen with the cemetery. I, I respect their processes and everything and, and I respect that they want to have their own area to do that.
Who is they?
What's that? The, the, for the, that, I don't know who's putting in the cemetery, but whoever's
Yeah.
The Islamic? Both. So, but do we know what's going to happen to the environment, the ground? The area out there is clay. I know it very well. I probably baled hay in that field for over 40 years. I got my dad's tractor stuck, which I'm glad he's not here to talk about. But it's, it's a dead end road. There's only two people that live on it. Him, I'm gonna eventually inherit the house. The hill brands that are at the end and cemetery is going to be in the middle. My concern with a lot of it is the separation between us. What's going to be done as, as far as boundaries, I guess, between the cemetery and and our property? Area to turn around, have most of this gravel road. Who's going to upkeep the road? Who's going to upkeep the cemetery? Just, just a lot of not wanting things to change more than what they already have. And I, I love this area. I don't ever want to leave it. Like I said, I grew up in that house and I still go there two, three times a week. So that's all I have for now. I guess. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone virtually? Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there motion or discussion? Excuse me, Treasurer Corstang?
I just wanted to make a note. Part of the packet included the Treasurers Tax Collection Report for 2023. This is new, has not been done before. This was recommended by our new Finance and Budget Director. I thought it was a great idea as well. I think it's a really important part of the increased transparency within the township that we're really working for. It breaks out the total tax collected and where it's going. And I think it's really important for people to see where their tax dollars are going. And then next year, there's one other thing that I think that we will try, I haven't talked to Lorna yet, to see if she can do this or not, but I'm assuming she can get us a report as well to kind of break down whether the tax collector, tax collected, how much is from residential, how much is industrial and how much is commercial? So I just wanted to make note that that is in your packet. It's online, it's posted for people to review. And again, it's part of the increased transparency that we've been talking about all along, just for everybody to see where their tax dollars, how much tax we're totally collecting, how much actually stays within the township and where the rest of your tax dollars are going. It, it also includes the amount that we didn't collect and what we sent to the, the county for them to reimburse us and then they take on that collection piece, so.
I have two corrections to the draft minutes. On item one, the comment from Mr. Whitley, I had to go back and listen to it because I didn't hear it correctly. So we're going to change it to say, he questioned the strategic, strategic plan and goals of the township to support with allocated resources, its stated goals outside of the SAD expenditures. So that is a change. And then the other change is item 032 in new business, Ralph Moxley, it should say ZBA, not DDA. And again, that was, they sound the same, so I didn't get it right. So I want to make that correction as well.
And then it also should be, who is the person? Because I think the, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think the way it's written, there was a correction to the original items that were in the packet that it originally listed somebody incorrectly. And the way it's worded, it sounds like Rox, Ralph Moxley was the person that was listed incorrectly and it was not him. He is on the ZBA. It's who is listed incorrectly?
ZBA member Lou Barra was never on that.
Yeah, he was on the list in the packet and he is not, he was supposed to be on that. He's never been on there, no offense to him, but.
Sure, he'd be great.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda with those changes.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda with the changes to the draft minutes as stated. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Finance, excuse me, financial actions. Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the invoices to be paid and the financial statements for January and February.
And Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to, to approve both of tonight's financial actions. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, first item of new business, article nine, item 033, 2024, proposed village sidewalk repairs. Township engineer Eric Thorne is here tonight to recommend approval of a contract for sidewalk repairs in the village area. Engineer Thorne, welcome and please proceed.
Included in your packet tonight is a proposal project to repair otherwise troublesome sidewalk in the DDA village area, Old 28th, 28th and Cascade Road. We had originally had a discussion last week with the DDA about that proposed contract. What that contract includes is about 5,500 square foot of sidewalk replacement of sidewalk that is either severely damaged, meaning it's more than half of a joint to joint slab is cracked up, or there is a tripping hazard, tripping hazard typically meaning at least a quarter inch fault line between two slabs of concrete. DDA decided out of the, the bid was 87,845 and some change from Epic Excavating. It was below the engineer's estimate and as well as two other bids were all capable contractors, including the low bidder. The DDA decided to allocate $44,000 of their budget towards repairs and then asking for the, the board tonight to allocate the remainder, $43,000 and some change from general fund. If there are any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. Anything also related to sidewalk or village and then moving forward, what we might do to maintain our sidewalks in the area, I'm happy to answer them. Yes.
Eric, a quick question, and I probably know this, but I wanted to just make sure that the repairs are going to include the sub, substructure, proper drainage, et cetera, et cetera, so that the new repairs last longer than the original ones?
Yep. Majority of issues in this area are caused either by vehicles running over concrete near driveways, possibly utility work, or they're caused by roots from trees, just given the nature of the village area. There are a lot of roots and trees by the sidewalk. Part of the contract work does stipulates anywhere sidewalk is removed, subgrade as it's determined to be poor is required to be removed up to. Um, subgrade as it's determined to be poor is required to be removed up to a foot of depth. As well as any remaining roots from trees are required to be removed up to a foot in depth. So that issues that we're seeing now that are the reason these pieces of concrete are being replaced will not be replaced again in the near future. And a lot of these, the quantity of work is what it is right now, simply because it's something that has not been addressed for a number of years. And that this would not be a regular occurrence on, you know, at an annual basis, there may be areas of repair, but not to this extent.
Now, the next question kind of tagged down to the coattails of that one. Melanie, wherever she is. Oh, she's left. Ah, chicken. What happens to the trees if you find substantial roots have to be removed? Is there a consideration for replacing those trees in the future so that they don't go like that?
Certainly could. Don't typically want to be in the practice of removing enough root structure to cause that. Um, I've certainly seen it before. I don't think any of the instances here in the village are cause for concern. Um, typically when we say remove root removal, they're, you know, less than an inch or two inch diameter roots that are simply found their way in between pieces of sidewalk.
Okay.
But should that be a concern, can certainly check the truth, health of the tree first and foremost. Um, in certain cases, there may be trees that are in ailing health anyway, and it would be a benefit to replace them.
Okay.
But we would approach it on a on a tree by tree basis.
Got you. Thank you.
I've just a question for Manager Smith. Generally speaking, the owner of the property is responsible for the sidewalks. In reading through the packet, we don't currently have an ordinance that requires that, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
So I I just want people to understand that as well, that the sidewalks are different from the trail system.
Correct.
That generally speaking, some municipalities have an ordinance out where if you are the owner of the property, you maintain your sidewalk within your property.
Correct. And that that's
You do not have that.
Yeah, that's with most communities in the state. Um, and then now that we're on notice that there's actually some trip hazards, we actually are liable uh, to repair that. And there's uh, a lawsuit that was
And reading through the packet, we're looking in the future. We have some repairs to do. This is just a small section that you have looked at. But knowing we need to budget for this in the future to repair what we currently have issues with or where there's issues and then looking at doing some sort of different ordinance where we can address that, correct?
Correct. Yep. And that'll come back before this board for consideration.
And these are the extent of repairs that I'm aware of.
In this section.
And wow, uh, anywhere.
Yep.
No, but there is no repairs sitting on my desk that I know about as a trip hazard and could open us to a liability.
So just clarify on that. It's it's once we're notified of a trip hazard is when we're on notice for that that repair.
I don't doubt that there's a need for repairs in places, but there's nobody that said, look, this is an issue. You need to address it and we are not addressing it.
Okay. But I but I think maybe the plan that you have talked about is maybe looking at any of the sidewalks that we do have, just to kind of see where we're at. Um, just so we can address any issues that are there.
That again, we haven't been notified of.
Right. Yeah. And and there there can be an extensive sidewalk program put together. That's it. We'll take quite some time to put something together like that. Um, in this, these concerns were actually brought to our attention by the actual DDA. Um, and especially with all the activity that's going to be going on in the village area in the DDA, um, it's important that we actually address these.
Well, that um, obviously it's we, you know, you're you made some great points, like city guard, but they require the residents to maintain their sidewalks. So that's a great point, another topic to be addressed later, but given all that, I I move to approve the contract with Epic Epic Excavating Excavating to complete the side up repairs that our township engineers identified. And in addition, make sure we approve the budget amendment to take care of that.
Support. It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Forstaj, to approve the contract with Epic Excavating for sidewalk repair and also the proposed budget amendment. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Item zero three four twenty twenty four, approval of permits for the Metro Cruise Warm Up and also Pit Stop Event. Manager Smith?
Sure. Um, so myself and Madison met with Brandon Simmons, who's uh, with Metro Council.
Is he here tonight?
Is not.
Okay, I just didn't know if
He was supposed to be, but he's not here. Um, we had a really good conversation with him. They've gone through some changes um, in their organization of the last couple of years, but there was some miscommunication between the township and them. We're quite sure this was actually going to happen this year. He assured us that it it is going to happen. Um, it's a I haven't been here for this actual event yet, but this cruise inevitably whether the permit is approved for them to do this gathering at the end of twenty eighth and Cascade. The cruise is still going to come up and down twenty eighth street. So the cars will be here, so we might as well just welcome them to the community with open arms. The one thing that will that is being requested that's different than in the past is that um, we we asked what they have these pit stop events, which are events along the cruise where they actually do activities. People can park and we asked, why why don't you do one of those at the end of the cruise in Cascade? And so they actually are now on Saturday. So that will keep some people at our businesses and our DDA, which, you know, as we continue, like I sound like a broken record. But as we continue to look at the and focus on the village, that's going to become really important to our businesses to be able to schedule, whether it's promotions or promote their business, um, set up, you know, camp and and promote themselves. So this is a, this is a great thing. And then I did tell him about Friendship Park and the new amphitheater that's going in. So when he left, he did give me a call back because we may be looking at something else on Saturday afternoon as well.
Great.
In the amphitheater, so.
And does any, do either of these require any road closures?
No.
Perfect. Questions, discussion, motions?
With that, I make a motion to approve the Metro Cruise Warm Up and Pit Stop Event permits. And that may have some added value uh, as we go down the road. Support.
That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the permits for the Metro Cruise Warm Up and also the Pit Stop Event. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero three five twenty twenty four. Consider special use permit for an athletic facility at forty nine zero one twenty eighth street. This is the former Bed Bath and Beyond location. We have planning director Hendricks here this evening and also manager Smith to provide an overview. Director Hendricks?
Yep. So this is on our agenda because this is a type two special land use, which go for approval to the planning commission and then to the board. As um, as supervisor mentioned, we are bringing this to you because there is a gym facility that we have defined as an athletic facility within our ordinance that would like to operate at what's called PUD thirty um, of our zoning ordinance. And in that PUD, it requires that anything that is a buy right use in the B two, which is kind of the twenty eighth street corridor, would go to planning commission and the board for special use. We found that it's an appropriate use. We reviewed the site plan. Um, the planning commission has put some conditions on it. So I would ask for a motion to approve this special land use um, affirming the and site plan, um, affirming the conditions of the planning commission.
Were those conditions, would those have been required anyways or no?
I look Some of them were. So some some of those you're going to see. We're getting a little bit more granular about what we put in our conditions so that so that we know exactly what's approved. So you'll see that coming through when we have um, planning commission items that will have language. It says the approved plan stamped sealed by the planning director dated this so that there's no question in the minutes that when we come back these items twenty thirty years from now that we know exactly what document was the approved document with any amendments, you know, noted along the way, just for clarity and for record keeping. Um, so some of them are things that are required. Other things are things that that the board, that the planning commission deliberated and that would be appropriate for the site. Any questions?
Is the applicant here tonight?
No, they're not in attendance.
Okay.
But Andrea, what you're saying is this was really vetted by the planning commission and they added additional conditions into it on top of anything that would be required by our by our ordinances. So the planning commission was very comfortable with this.
Yes, they were all things that were required or that the planning commission had um, flexibility to approve with with a special use permit. Yes.
And as we all know, the planning commission has been very thorough in everything they've vetted the last few years. They've done a great job.
Andrea, a quick question. Have you have you or the uh, planning commission received any negative uh, comments or objections from any of the residents around that area in particular?
No, we had one public comment. It's mentioned in the staff report, and that was from the owner of Smokey Bones asking about um, if there would be adequate parking for the gym. So we, I kept in touch with him and just when we had completed the staff review and calculated the parking, which is a hundred spaces overparked, I let him know that yeah, his concern was was addressed. Um, and invited him, you know, to attend the planning commission.
Mr. Smith, did you receive anything, any objections or concerns?
No, I received nothing.
I received a question from a commissioner that um, about potentially with the extra parking spots and with the soon to be built pedestrian bridge off Burton, just north of there about um, if there was an opportunity to increase connectivity. Kind of a goofy on the map, but like possibly like maybe um, reserve or set aside some of those extra asphalt parking spaces for um, potential connection down the road. But um, we looked at that closely and that this is for a you, a permit for use and that has to do with the actual planned unit development.
There's it's not Site plan review. And that wasn't, the whole site wasn't analyzed.
So we don't have the authority. Yeah, we don't have the authority and apples and oranges. I have a question, though, as far as that. When you looked in the the packet, the map and the outline of the PUD, the planned unit development, that was landlocked, is landlocked. It's a nineteen ninety five approval, right?
Yes.
So back in the days of like strip malls and shopping centers.
Oh, yeah.
So this was allowed without any direct public access, excuse me, direct access to a public road? And just now, as a trained professional, do you think that we should allow that kind of development?
No, I think that we have, we, you know, as we look at twenty eighth street, it was piecemealed. I guess I would say, let's look at the entire, let's look at the parcel and and go on a parcel by parcel analysis and make sure that we're we're thinking about everything that's included. But what you see with twenty eighth street is that we have all of these kind of parcels that are all facing twenty eighth street, but don't really have any clear connection to each other. And then as we've kind of developed the infill area in the back, we don't think about the experience for people driving on the access roads or we we have to do a better job. No, if I if this was a new development, I'd say let's look at a lot more. We wouldn't see, I I doubt somebody would come in with this kind of development today, but
And if they did, we wouldn't recommend, we wouldn't allow it.
And what and as we're redrafting the zoning ordinance, we'll address that with setbacks and access and and road um, requirements.
But we also can't take away a property right, a private property right that's already been
Previously established. Yep.
You want me to touch on the trail connection real quick?
Yes, thank you.
So there was the concern about trail connection down Patterson, um, down up towards to the north to Burton. And when we looked at this, although it's not in Cascade, there is a sidewalk connection that crosses over Patterson. You can take the sidewalk all the way to the north to Burton. And once the pedestrian bridge gets constructed over the the expressway, we have a small gap to fill that we will work with our pathways committee on looking at filling that gapway that that way you have complete access. Uh, if we did want to do access on the Cascade side, we would have to work with those. Um, I think there's three or four businesses along Patterson. And then there's five or six houses that we would have to obtain easements from and then construct sidewalks or pathways there as well. So it would take a lot, it would take a lot of effort to actually do that more than just, I think, what some of the concerns were from from others.
May I address the language in our ordinance too on that one? The language in our ordinance that Grace is referring to and and Commissioner Bruno was discussing is good language. So the language essentially says that if a new development or redevelopment comes in, we should look at the entrance, the door entrance to that building and then pedestrian and bike connectivity for safety through parking lots. And in this case, because they weren't doing any redevelopment of the parking lot, they did re-stripe from the door to the parking spaces to ensure that there was a clear spot for pedestrians to walk across. But there wasn't a clear layout that would say, yeah, let's remove this and get this connection to an existing connection that already exists or is planned. We'll continue to do that with every site and analyze that. It's good language, but the question was, was it appropriate at this time? And was there a significant amount of development that would lead to you know, requiring that in this case? And the answer was no. But but we went through the exercise and thought about it. That's, thank you.
Given the reviews and thorough vetting by the planning commission, I move to approve the special permit in the site plan review as proposed and approved by the planning commission with their conditions.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the special use permit as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero three six twenty twenty four. Consider approval of special use permit for cemetery at six six seven zero fifty second street. Interesting.
Well, I just before Andrea gets going, I just, I wasn't sure if you wanted to hear this at the beginning or not, but Mr. Smith's father actually did call me this afternoon in regards to this particular agenda item. Um, I did forward it on to the clerk and the deputy clerk in regards to putting that in the official minutes that he's he disagrees with the the cemetery.
Is there an additional rationale beyond what his son?
No, not not really. His son probably went into more detail. Can I speak or not?
No. Director Hendrick?
Yeah, you'll also see additionally in front of you, I did put an email that we received from the neighbors to the west, the Hillbrands.
Marty Hillbrands?
Yep.
We are very familiar with Mr. Hillbrands.
Yep. And there's a few notes there about that they were happy with the increased side bet or setback. Um, they had some preferences on trees and they had concerns about um, the entrance and wanting some additional side signage. Uh, I'll kind of give you the rundown and see if you have additional questions on that. So this this came before the planning commission on December four. It was established that it was a special use in the ARC district, I believe. Um, so the applicant had come with a fairly different design than what is presented before you today, and they got some feedback and there was concerns from the community. Um, and they actually took that design back and made significant modifications to their plan to accommodate the request of the neighbors. Um, that additionally, you know, this, this is a um, a very passive use, which was found appropriate. There was some desire to add additional traffic um, signage. But considering any other use, if we look at a store, a drive through, this is a cemetery. You, the neighbors are not going to bother you. There's not a lot of action in this area.
Nations versus parks. They're not real loud or rowdy?
No. So some of those suggestions were considered and you know, found to be unnecessary, considering that the nature of the use in the passive um, the lack of traffic.
What does arc stand for? Again, this is that the zoning that we're talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Agriculture.
Agricultural rule.
Rural conservation.
Conservation. Yep. Um, another concern, um, actually our our clerk Slater was there and had a lot more insight because of her work with our cemeteries on, you know, this is a passive use, but it's also a use that will exist there forever, and we have to have a plan um, in place to be able to maintain this forever. So she's brought some good suggestions. The applicant um, responded very um, reasonably to allowing us or, you know, can approve or yeah, bringing forth conditions that were appropriate to ensure that this was maintained in perpetuity. Um, they've been, that is in your packet as well. Um, yeah, they've they've met our expectations of the planning commission. Um, and we recommend approval for this as well. Do you have any further questions?
Is this to the east or west of the storage facility?
I don't know where a storage facility is. So this is
I don't think there's a storage facility over there.
This is on a
Second street, right?
Are you talking about Thornapple River? It's just east of the airport where fifty second street is heading that ends into the airport, but it's on the east side of the airport.
Yeah.
On the west side of Thornapple River.
Yeah, there's no It's a very short chunk.
The storage uh, facility is you remember where that is?
Is is there a fifty second street on the west side of the airport also?
It's behind the airport where they're just a short strip in there. John Slagboom. I don't know, a few, I ten years ago, maybe.
There's nothing over there. I think you might maybe the fifty second street, it used to go all the way through, right? The airport, then they cut it off. I think what, there's storage facilities on the west side, but this is just a little tiny chunk of what's left of fifty second on the east side.
It's a dirt road.
It's right off of Thornapple River Drive. It's just north It's right off of Thornapple River Drive. It's just north of sixtieth. You, you, if you're headed. Just north of, I'm, it's just a little, it's, it's all country by those buffalo. And then if you were to go towards the airport, you can see the airport fence.
Okay, that I, I had the wrong area. He, Johns would be, uh, west of the, uh, where we're talking about then.
Right. And that is full of storage facilities, warehouses and industrial. And there is a tiny cemetery that's an old cemetery, those poor. Saint Mary's, beautiful little old cemetery surrounded by progress.
Saint Mary's Catholic Cemetery.
Yep, yep.
Fifty-second and Craft.
So this would be a private cemetery, right? And they would be responsible for maintaining it?
Correct. Yep.
May I speak to that? I had some concerns, um, as well. They are not. Subject to Cascade Cemetery ordinance because they are private. So we cannot impose the same conditions on them, although we asked them to please. Avoid as closely as possible to our, uh, methods. And they did agree to that. They agreed to create a maintenance agreement. Is that correct Andrea? So that it's clearly, clearly laid out since cemeteries. As Andrea said, are forever. There has to be a plan for their care. So, um, I appreciated that very much.
Is the applicant here?
No.
The applicant representative is?
Oh, welcome, sir.
Evening. I'm Paul Henderson with Rosine and Associates.
Like, you're not Dr. Metwally.
I'm sorry? Did you show up?
So you will, you will, uh, they will maintain a plow and everything to have it plowed in the winter and.
Yes, sir.
In the summer.
Yes, um, they've, uh, they have an attorney working on it, an agreement to not only for the operation of the cemetery. But as far as a perpetual maintenance of cemetery.
And sorry, you said it, but what is your relationship to the?
I'm the engineer for the applicant.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We've, we've gone through quite a bit with, uh. Staff previously, so I think the plan we have before you is a, is a good plan. We've made quite a few adjustments to. Accommodates the concerns of the planning commission and.
Very accommodating. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. I just wanted to say one thing. I do appreciate the, um. Health department report. I feel like that was very thorough. Was good. And in addition to that, the engineering report as well. Um, I think the two of those answered a lot of the questions I had, which I think was really important. Um, so I do appreciate those being in the packet and anybody publicly can see them as well.
It's ironic because right now our ordnance, Cascade Township in our, we have what, three public cemeteries? We don't allow green burials, um, but it's definitely a, a trending topic that a lot of municipalities and. And cemetery owners are going towards and a lot of public, there's a demand. So this sort of forced the issue a little bit because. We did get a couple of comments from people who live nearby, the idea of. Well, the idea of living, drinking from a well near dead bodies. Nobody likes that thinking, but. We appreciate Commissioner Boujack, um. Getting in touch with the county and then the thorough kind of to just the, this. The ideas and fears versus the biology and.
You, the health department will allow your septic system within fifty feet of your well, so.
Another gross, I, another visual that we don't like to think about.
Right.
I also think what, in addition to what you said, I also think it. They're trending towards green cemetery, green burials, but I also think that. There's also some, some cases right now nationally when people have declined. Allowing them as well. Municipalities have declined them. So I, I think that that's important also, just to make note.
One item that was brought up earlier about the soils, we have very heavy soils here, so they'll tend to not allow anything to migrate through them into the. Aquifer below as well. But the health department's reviewed it in detail and it was proved it, so.
Uh, additional comments, questions?
No, I just appreciate that, like Wendy said, the, the, the input from the health department. But also the thorough vetting that the staff did with all the conditions.
Fair.
That were laid out as well as the planning commission, even talking about water retention, detention runoff. And, and, and other issues, and then all again, all the health issues. So, a- and I understand from Andrea that also that. The, the applicant contacted the neighbors, made several. Changes to the plan, improvements, if you will, based upon that input, based upon input from the planning commission. And as you said, they adopted those i- in the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
One, one, I know that, that actual applicant's not here. Um, but just noting the email that Andrea gave to us today. Um, with the evergreens preferred for denser screening, like, is there?
We don't, if, we don't have any objection to planning anything.
And we don't have a preference.
We, we do have some limitations because we are in the airport zone, so they have certain plantings that they don't allow, don't, or don't prefer. So we, we'd be happy to compare it against that list and do what we can.
Okay. That's just, I just think that it, to maintain that communication between what they want and what you are willing to do is important.
And potentially that's administrative, so we can have that conversation when we get the final plans.
One comment, um, health and human safety is a county's county issue. We at the township level would, uh. Focus on land use and from a land use perspective in this agricultural residential. Conservation area, a cemetery is a perfectly appropriate use. And then it, I just want to address a couple of concerns from residents, Mr. Smith's son. Uh, Max Smith, we've heard from in the past, and then also Marty Hillbrands, who both live, well.
On either side of it.
Marty Hillbrands doesn't live in Cascade Township, but his property that he references, he's part owner of, uh, family property, as same as. Max Smith and I. I hear their concerns, but from a land use perspective, those are the same property owners. Who were teaming up with Visser, the Visser property. And meeting with them and urging, working with Visser so that they could have the proper, that area, which is right now rural. Um, very southeast part, east of Cascade Township, very near M six and the airport. So that they could make a huge profit partnering with Visser so that that would be rezoned. Industrial, commercial industrial. So the eighty acre Visser parcel would be, would be divided. They had already met with prior township staff, prior township, the prior township supervisor, the prior township engineer. So to make a windfall off of their property based on their location. If you want to talk about, you know, Mr. Smith's son says, what did he say? Not wanting things to change more than they already have. Literally subdividing it into light industrial full of warehouses. Not only that. You had the airport's partnership behind the scenes because that in turn would blow up development to then justify the need. For four additional on-off ramps along M six in Cascade Township. So the only people that would benefit that, I mean, talk about caring about your neighbors, that is the most self-serving. Opportunistic stance to take when those are the same property owners. Who are leveraging their location to cash out at the expense of everyone and everyone else in the area and the community. And so frankly, a cemetery in this area, we, I think it's the best, it's fantastic. And if there's another cemetery that wants to go in on the eighty acre parcel that Visser has listed for sale. All day long, it's perfect. I just, it's ironic that the people complaining are the same ones who were working with Visser. That would literally lead to the, uh, four additional on and off ramps and a bunch of warehouses, traffic. Draining public safety dollars with no added tax benefits in unbelievable. So. No, you can respond during public comments at the second session, but this isn't a back and forth. But the amount of time and energy that has gone into land use in this particular area. With all of the, the forces that were at work that we had no idea about, it's just. This is a welcome opportunity. Thank you.
Given the, the thorough vetting by the planning commission, the applicant's willingness to, to make extensive changes. And the public hearings that have already, uh, occurred a- and the approval by the planning commission. I move to approve the special use permit in the site plan review, um, for the cemetery with the conditions placed by the planning commission.
Shipley supports.
And one last comment, Mr. Marty Hillbrands came in before this was all above board. And I sat down with him for an hour while he was trying to pitch the sale of his non-developal property. Based on like old growth trees and the beauty and nature around it. While he was talking to Visser to sell off the flatland, he was trying to sell for the higher than appraised value to the township for.
Um, he, he has mentioned that we need to, uh. Holistically address all the fees within the township. And I asked that this come on, um, ahead of that, and we kind of set the format up to show you what the new, um, fee schedule would look like. But this was really important for the, the sake of the planning department because our fees haven't been updated. It's been. I, I almost, I think almost thirty years. So I might be wrong, it might be twenty years, but I, I guess the decade at this point doesn't matter. So. We really wanted to make sure that our fees were indicative of the work that we're putting into this. We do pay our planning commissioners. We do have multiple public hearings or at least, um, they will be put on the agenda for multiple planning commissions for certain items. We coordinate with engineering, fire, building, and we're trying to even pull in Melanie, Director, um, Mannion from parks. To ensure that even the road connections and the bike connections are within our planning purview. So. We wanted to make sure that, that, the fees that we charge applicants to develop in Cascade Township are. Consistent with the work that our staff puts into them and that the burden is not put on. Uh, the taxpayers and residents of Cascade. So we wanted to get this out there right away. Um, we worked kind of two ways on this. We looked at the process for approval within the zoning ordinance. So. What it required from planning, staff, what, how many times it had to go to the board, and that's how we determine those costs. Um, and then we also looked at applicable, um, municipalities that were similar in size or were in our area. So we looked at Ada, Adrian, Allendale, Birmingham, uh, Grand Rapids, uh, Grand Rapids Township. We looked at, uh, the, the planning fees for McKenna, uh, Rockford and Wyoming to get kind of a baseline for what we thought was. Appropriate. And as I said, then, um, calculated the amount of staff time, noticing time, mailing time. Our mailing costs that go into each of our applications. And then I've put that forward in your packet. Uh, for approval.
So this proposal puts more responsibility on the developers. And takes less responsibility off the general taxpayer, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of which the taxpayer should not bear responsibility.
Should never have.
Well, read between the lines.
Are these the proposed fees, right, that we have?
Yes, you, and I'm sorry that I didn't put the current fees. I can sum it up pretty easily. Anything residential is a hundred dollars, anything, um. Commercial is five hundred dollars. They're both in escrow. Uh, theoretically, we're supposed to add up the amount of money that we spend and then bill the developer. Right now we're doing that for the, you know, we're going, working backwards and making sure that that still occurs. Um.
How long have you been here, Andrea?
Almost three months.
You know, if you're, was this on the docket before you started three months ago, or is this something that started?
I think that it had been mentioned.
No, it, I mean, no, it hadn't, except with Jade. Andrew Smith, how long have you been here?
Uh, six months.
And this was what?
Seven months, I take that back.
So up and from nineteen ninety-eight until six months ago. Those, that was our fee structure? And I just want to make sure, you said just the escrow is all that.
Yeah, we charge an escrow and then there is evidence that we went back and actually charged people on occasion.
So the new develop residential developments that have gone in since, I don't know, nineteen ninety-eight, that would be a hundred dollars? Five hundred if you're Walmart?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't reviewed everything. I think it was happening consistently for a while.
We're only going forward.
Yeah. And, and just to clarify too, these fees that are before you tonight are the planning department's fees. When you start talking about building department fees, that's a whole different fee structure. There's a different formula for that. Um, I think that's being done correctly, but I want to draw attention to the format that is presented to you tonight. In regards to the planning department fees, this will be the format of a new Cascade Township fee schedule. That will be introduced with the budget this year that will incorporate all fees from all departments. Parks fees, planning fees, um, building fees, anything else that we may require a fee from. Passports, whether it's dog licenses, whatever, whatever fees is, it will have a spot in this fee schedule. It'll be adopted with the budget and it'll be reviewed on an annual basis to make sure that we're accounting for accurate increases and that we're not waiting.
And our building department, which handles like electrical permits and every time you pull a permit for an exist, that kind of stuff. That is more up to date and we work with other communities and that kind of stuff, that they don't operate in a bubble.
Yeah, so just to, so to address the comment at the beginning of the meeting, these are different fees than the actual building inspection fees that we, that are charged. This is strictly for the planning department. And when you look at some of the things that are coming before you tonight, which we have a three hundred seventy-two page packet tonight. Two items in here we're planning. That's a lot of information to go through. When you're talking about site plans and special use permits and variances and zoning ordinance amendments and things like that, those are very time, um. There's a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to, to, to address those items. So this is appropriate for consideration at this time because it. I just hadn't gotten to this and it's, it's worse than what I thought it was.
And the planning unit development, you're, you're going to collect a thirty-eight hundred dollar fee, but. You're going to collect a five thousand escrow payment?
Yes, yep. So we have ninety-nine P U Ds in the town, in the township. That means that we have one hundred ordinances in the township. We have our regular zoning ordinance, not, I mean, one hundred zoning ordinances. Because we have one hundred, oh, we have ninety-nine different ordinances for every single P U D and one. For the zoning ordinance, which sometimes they don't conflict. Sometimes they have different rules. But every single time that we have a site plan come or a modification, which has happened already since I've been there with the childcare. Every time we have to change a sentence, we have to go. Through the, the process of changing each of these P U Ds. So our ordinance requires that we come with a preliminary plan, that we notice the neighbors, that we come with. We come to the planning commission whom we pay per meeting with preliminary plan. Then we do a full review, they resubmit everything, they come with a. They want their language, so we have to get ahold of the legal counsel to draft the language. Then we come again to the planning commission to do the final site plan, and then it comes before you. And every one of those.
Five hundred dollars, that's a really good deal if you're. Depends on if you're a taxpayer or if you're the one making money off the development.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, that's an extensive process. Plan unit developments are supposed to be, um, an exception to the rules that is meant. To only be applied to, to land that has unique characteristics and where the development would benefit. Um, the community. However, they've been just kind of handed out without any benefit to the community for decades.
Here.
So the fees should be, um. Indicative of the work that has to go into it, the time that you look at the tenant planning commission, three times to the planning commission. That means we have to, we have to notice the neighbors twice. We have to put four different mailers in the. In the, um, Grand Rapids press at about two hundred dollars a pop. So i- it's just, it's not, this is very reasonable, considering.
I brought, I asked about this multiple times under past, um, staff and it, it didn't ever go anywhere. So I really appreciate, uh, Manager Smith and then. Director Hendrick's picking it up right away. Thank you. Very long overdue. Very appreciated.
Motion to approve the new fee schedule for the planning department. Shipley supports.
That is a motion by, um, trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the proposed fl- planning department fee schedule. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Director Hendrick. Item zero, three, eight, twenty, twenty-four. Introduction of hotel licensing ordinance. The proposed hotel ordinance in front of us tonight will address the disproportionate use of public safety dollars. Time and resources associated with hotels in Cascade Township. And their negative impact on adjacent businesses and neighborhoods. The information in the meeting packet in front of us demonstrates a sobering concern regarding public health and safety. We have township attorney, Michael Homier. We have assist, uh. Todd Stevenson, correct, from the fire department? And we also have, I believe, uh, our D D A, member of our D D A, downtown development authority and local business owner, Scott.
And we also have, I believe, our DDA, member of our DDA, Downtown Development Authority and local business owner Scott Vogel, here also, who can, you know, give, illustrate some of his personal experience being next to one of those hotels, present tonight to assist us in our review of the proposed ordinance. Manager Smith has been coordinating and moving this process ahead. And Manager Smith, would you please begin the presentation?
Sure. So this was one of the first tasks that was brought before me when I started. And it makes up a hundred and fifteen pages of your board packet tonight. So what I did is I condensed and put together a short presentation introducing this hotel licensing ordinance and hitting the high points and then myself and the others that are, that you just mentioned can answer any questions. Just to do a quick overview, the Board of Trustees had a work session on April tenth to discuss the certain hotels and motels within Cascade that have become hotspots for emergency services. They're generating, as you said, a disproportionately high number of emergency service calls and the township taxpayers are subsidizing disproportionate number of calls. The residents and businesses are suffering from increased response times and other disadvantages related to this disproportionate use of those services as well. So that's kind of a quick overview, it's pretty much the same thing that you just said supervisor. And these are some of the statistics that we actually pulled to get us to this point. And I'll, and I'll talk a little bit about how we actually came to the, the the solution of an ordinance. But we did work with the Kent County Sheriff's Office and they actually had a sheriff-wide event tonight, so Omar and Kate are not here. But they did attend our work session on the tenth and were very forward with some information. But between January first of twenty twenty-two and February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four, they made one thousand five hundred and ninety service calls to thirteen specific hotels and motels. We have sixteen in the township, the data that I received from then included thirteen, which makes up about ten percent of all their calls to Cascade as a whole. So in, in then the fire department, you also have in your packet a list of all fire department calls from the same time for twelve, the last twelve months. And those make up eleven percent of the fire department calls. We have seen law enforcement incidences that have occurred at these hotels and motels within the township. And fortunately, we included that, included at least one murder and overdoses from controlled substances. The other thing that's in the packet that is available online as well, it showed, we pulled many online reviews of these hotels and motels that reflect unsafe and unsanitary conditions, lack of adequate staffing, lack of adequate supplies. You, you can read it for yourself, it's on the screen, but there are definitely issues with these hotels. The one thing that actually, after reviewing those online reviews that came to light that I, we really didn't think about is we actually saw verification on these reviews of maintenance code violations. So the public save, the health and safety of these guests at these hotels, when we see wires coming out of a air conditioner or a fire alarm that, or smoke alarm that actually was in the drawer of the bedstand, not actually on the ceiling where it's supposed to be, burnt out lights and exit signs. So there, there's, there's a lot more work to do, I'm sorry.
Doors that don't lock?
Doors that don't lock, windows that were screwed shut because they were, and that clearly is a code violation. So actually, what that showed, that actually gave me more angst than I think than what was happening as far as the, the people that were staying in these hotels. Because that truly is, you're putting people's lives in danger when you start doing things like that and cutting corners. Some of the hotels and motels in the township are now operating in a manner that is not exclusively or primarily provided for transit, transient accommodations that's permitted under the township zoning ordinances. We were seeing people that were staying in these hotels for long-term stays, and that's not the intention of a hotel. Worked with this township attorney and we did find some other communities that have ordinances for hotels and motels, including the city of Grand Rapids, the city of Southgate, and the city of Battle Creek. So the next few pages are kind of, kind of show you what I just, I just briefly went over some of these items, but this actually shows you the breakdown of the number of calls, those one thousand five hundred and ninety calls to the sheriff's department. You can see that there is definitely a distinct line to be drawn at about two hundred calls and up with our, our biggest frequent flyers, if you will. Now, the Red Roof Inn, the Clarion Inn and Suites, Candlewood Suites, Best Western. And then it's worth mentioning the roadway inn because it's such a small location, but it still had almost a hundred calls over that time period. This shows you that eleven percent, this is, I'm just showing you the, the data that I received from the fire department in a presentable fashion. This is eleven percent of the calls to the fire department. This here, we actually do have some comments from some business owners, the what is, and I've talked to him ahead of time, but what you see in the white here, this actually came from Mr. Vogel, who sits on our DDA, who owns Nothing But Cakes, which is right there in front of Red Roof Inn. I found it very, very disturbing that if you look at the third bullet point, what they found in their dumpster and that not only the sheriff's department came out and helped him, but they had to call in the CSI group to actually investigate the, what was in that dumpster because
What was that, for those who haven't looked at the packet?
Those were, I'll just read it. Bloody sheets in our dumpster from the Red Roof Inn, there was so much blood on the sheets that can, the Kent County Sheriff's Department, deputy and him had to check to make sure there wasn't anything else in those sheets. And to make sure they do that, they called in the CSI group department. He's had issues with his employees, clearly you can see there was some damage done to his business as well. And I invite Mr. Vogel to, after I get done, to come up and speak on, on his, on behalf of his comments. This other screenshot here is actually from another, it's the bank behind
North Point Bank.
North Point Bank. They've actually had to hire their own non-armed security to monitor their parking lots, which I thought that was pretty disturbing as well. This shows through some of the reviews that we actually did look at online. The one in regards to the smoke alarm that I just referenced, that is to your, that is on the upper right-hand corner. That smoke alarm fixture is actually on the ceiling with the wires, that's supposed to be hardwired in. The smoke alarm is in a drawer next to the bed.
Next to the bogs.
Next to the bogs. The one on the bottom references homeless people and seen picking out of the trash can, it appears that a lot of people are living there. The, the, I, I don't know if I need to go through all of these, but you get the gist. And I believe that there are about fifteen pages of this in, in, in the packet that's both of, in the public. Just so you know, this packet is available online on this township's website.
I am just, Manager Smith, I'm just thumbing through the packet right now. So I looked at the report summary from, this has to be sheriff's report, not fire department, top of page. I can't tell what it is, but it's basically incident type where they summarize the last two years. Incident number, the date, I, and it's, this is, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Sexual penetration, CSC through degree, right below that, sexual penetration, oral anal, CS three, CSC three, non-aggravated assault, times five, domestic assault, simple assaults, times at least ten, felonious assault, intimidating stalking, below that, larceny theft from building, times three, from auto, more larcenies, keep going down, motor, motor vehicle theft, fraud, still on the same page, more fraud, retail fraud, sex offense, sex offense, family abuse neglect, family abuse neglect, human trafficking investigation, this, and we all knew this, I'm just, I'm on one page of a summary, summary from the sheriff's department, more CSC threes. This, this isn't a hotel.
Don't forget the prostitution.
Oh, human trafficking, the, I don't know if anyone pays attention to the local news, but the sheriff's, Kent County Sheriff's Department chose the, or maybe it was the Michigan State Police chose one of these hotels to set up a sting, an undercover sting for human trafficking of minor children where multiple offenders were arrested. This is not, this is, it has been a problem since I've been here, but it wasn't until we had Manager Smith, people, adequate staffing and competent attorneys to actually get something done. Obstructing justice times fifteen on this concealed weapons. You can't make this up. Family trouble, like twenty times in a row. Do you want me to keep going? Because it's as bad or worse, do you want me to?
I didn't know, I didn't know where to stop, so that's why I just did an overview because, you know, and I think
The CSC three.
Yeah.
And I, I think
Solution in place.
And these are known as the airport hotels, nobody from the airport, like
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know
Suicide attempts, there's six of them on the next page, but only attempts.
It was a successful two.
Drug, oh, sorry, that was above it, I didn't see it. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, it in no way justifies the list and the, in what we have in front of us, but you know, you're going to have bad reviews and bad things that happen at some hotels. But this is a very consistent problem we have on a number of hotels that really has to have some sort of solution. And that's what we worked with the attorney. So this is where we sat down with the
Trafficking, seven of them on one of these pages, human trafficking. Sorry.
No, you can keep going if you'd like.
I just want to show how like screwed up it is and how bad it is. And then when they try to sue us, how well done we, this whole process was.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's important to know that we've got a hundred and fifteen pages that back up this ordinance that is eight pages long. So an eight-page document is backed up by a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten pages, so.
It's a snapshot.
And that's just a snapshot.
That's only twenty-four months, they only came back twenty-four months.
The reviews aren't even the twenty-four month, we had staff go through reviews and at some point I had to say, okay, stop. Because it just, it, it didn't matter, it wasn't a season, it wasn't the time of year, it wasn't, you know, it was across the board. There was a common theme across all of them.
There was one that was before you Jade, that it was in, the sheriff's office got a call because a fifty-something-year-old male said that he was robbed in the parking lot. And once the sheriffs investigated, he was robbed in the parking lot, but he had, he was at the hotel and had rented a room to meet up with some underage teenagers from Kentwood in the hotel room. And then the underage teenage girls who he was supposed to meet up with let their brother and a couple of his friends know who then robbed the old guy in the, not even old, but the guy in the parking lot. Then the guy who was there to meet minors called the cops when he got robbed. That, it's at the one right by Gippers where the dead body was found in the backyard this past winter.
We good?
And I think just to make residents feel comfortable. The, trying to, trying, trying to find out, not feel comfortable, that's a bad word.
Don't feel comfortable.
No, we don't feel comfortable.
Situation.
It is, it's very serious, but, but the point is, there are really five bad actors that are eighty percent of the calls. And those are the ones we really need to go after that, that really, so I don't want to paint a, a broad brush and, and kind of badmouth some of the hotels that are really good or good, good businesses. So we've got a solution come up and I think it's really important.
Yeah, so I'll go back to this slide real quick.
One thing real quick too Jade, sorry, I think by the reviews too, I think that it's also needed for people that do not live here and do not know where they're staying, that are coming here thinking they're getting a brand name hotel and they're staying here. And you read the reviews of what happened when they were staying there and it's horrible. It truly is a public nuisance and a public health problem to think that there are people from other places that come here to stay because it is by the airport and this is what happens. It, it's horrible.
The businesses nearby.
And to Trustee McDonald's point, I put the slide back up that shows, you know, the breakdown. You're going to have calls to hotels, that's inevitable, it's going to happen. But there's clearly a distinct line here, like I said before, where you have calls that are over and above what the normal call volume should be to an institution like this. So we had with the, met with the attorneys and the best course of action for the township to take is to the creation of a, of a local ordinance. So there is a solution, the proposed ordinance for consideration that's before you tonight and that we discussed at the work session. It addresses the following things, one, there's purpose and findings in the ordinance. There's a license requirement that has rules and regulations that go along with it. There's hotel standard requirements, that includes an operating plan, I mean, to main, and also to maintain their guest registry. There's occupancy requirements and definitions that need to be adhered to. And then, of course, there's violations and penalties for not following the ordinance and also an enforcement process. And then it's important to also just let everybody know that there is an appeal process. So just because we institute this ordinance and we got enacted, doesn't mean that it's gonna go away. So there is an opportunity that it could come back before you with a petitioner saying, I don't agree with this and here's why. And you, it will come back before this body. So this, again, multiple pages in the ordinance. Spent hours with the township attorney on creating the ordinance. So then I'll go through this next steps and then I'll let Mike go ahead and talk. But, you know, we introduced the ordinance tonight, the adoption of the ordinance, I have on here five twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. I will not be at the five eight meeting, but if you feel so inclined to pass it and adopt it then, that will not hurt my feelings whatsoever. But then after that, we still have more work to do because we have to actually develop the operating policy and procedure. And that means working with our staff, that means working with the sheriff's office in regards to inspection forms, setting the fees, coming back before you with a resolution that'll set the fee based upon calculations similar to what Andrea did for planning fees. And then we have to create, like I said, the various forms for, you know, not only to inform the, the hotels currently, but any future hotels, education, registration, license, inspection forms, anything else that we come up that we need. And then obviously go out and then educate the hotels with the packet of information, which we have already talked to the Kent County Sheriff's Office in regards to that, and they will handle the education and enforcement of this for us.
Nice.
And the activity that will be, that they will be doing, the way this ordinance is written, this will be paid through the public safety mileage, not, not general fund dollars. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike if he has anything more to add or correct me if I said something wrong. Or Scott, if you have comments from
Answer any questions, we've been there seven years.
Okay.
Perspective of time.
The only thing I would add to it is it's a timing issue, obviously, on, I would, I, I believe I'm here on the eighth of May. So if you want to adopt it then, the only thing would be, we would, we would want to have the, it could possibly wait until May twenty-second to develop the resolution approving the fee for the application because that should encompass the entire cost of administering that, right? Which is going to require inspections and reviews of those applications for those business licenses. So we can play that certainly by ear. You'll see, and I sent, I think, a redline version because there were some changes after the work session that were incorporated into that. One of the provisions that has been included, it will require those hotel motels or extended stay hotels to apply this year, no later than October first, twenty twenty-four, which we thought was a good date to start that, giving the effective date sometime to publish the notice of adoption and the summary, which we'll have to do after the board adopts it. So, and then give sufficient time to produce those rules, regulations and, and get in, and get those in process. So, but otherwise, you've, you've seen the changes that came out of the work session and so I think we're in pretty good shape.
I would like to make a motion to consider the approval of an introduction of hotel licensing ordinance as presented tonight. Seeing as how there's overwhelming justification to clean up our act in the township hotels.
Sure. Right, and just so we don't cut anybody off, further discussion or questions?
I'm just happy that after a year of pushing and whining and carrying on and barking about this, that even to the point where Manager Smith said, what does Timmy have against hotels that you guys have all caught on? We got a problem.
Yeah, Jade just thought you hated hotels. Only, only the ones in Cascade, not all of them. And Mr. Vogel, did you want to speak anything? We just really appreciate you coming tonight and also working with us throughout the process.
I guess the only thing I would add is a lot of resources have been applied to this to try to address it. And I sincere thank you to not only the township, but Kent County Sheriff's Department because they've made it very, they've made themselves very available to address our concerns. They've increased patrols, they've put a lot of resources towards it. We, over the seven years that we've been open, we have not seen a significant decline. Yes, we saw a huge peak during COVID because of a lot of different reasons. And while that declined, it still was elevated, it, we've never really quite come down. And I think what's also really important is we employ, you know, twenty to twenty-five people at that location and they're younger individuals and they're fearful of where they park and we've had to implement things to ensure their safety. Some are from outside our area and some are residents of Cascade. Some are from outside our area and some are residents of Cascade as well. And, you know, we look at it as a perspective, not only as a business owner from Cascade. We live here. We run our business here. It's hard to think that we have what, you know, I, we don't have to go in the detail of what is going on there. It's just great that there's, we're applying something else to it to help address the issue. So, a sincere thank you, but also for the safety of our team and for, for us to continue to do business because it's really hard when, you know, you have patrol cars filling a parking lot and you're trying to run a business or in severe cases where there was a murder in, in the back area at the Clarion and the suspect fled to the Red Roof Inn. They shut down everything with police tape and essentially is shutting down your business. And those are extreme examples. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but just more of this is a sincere thank you.
Would you say, Mr. Vogel, that this is, was this one of the largest concerns, the, the business?
I, from, and, and this is a person, personal point of view to my business. I think it's, it's up there as one of the number one issues of making sure that my team's safe. Cause if I'm not there and, and something happens, I'm responsible for these people. I, I take that very seriously. And also concerned of the long-term, like we invested our life savings into starting this business. And you have the concern over the long-term of, you know, can you run out of this location? The cost to relocate it, this is where we want it to be over the long-term. So, yes, it's, it's one of the top ones. And as a DDA member, I will speak, I, I think this is a huge concern. If you have North Point Bank saying like, I had to hire a security guard where they made a substantial investment in our community, they're not alone. There's other people impacted. So I think it's gonna impact the long-term viability of that part of the DDA unless it's addressed. So I think there's multiple things in play in terms of my concern set.
Did you ever have any interaction with the hotel owners?
No, and, and while I probably could have been more proactive, there has been a lot of changeover of managers at each location. And as you pick your paths, I've been, I've picked the path more clearly with working with the township and working with the Kent County Sheriff's Department. With that said, the management at the Sheridan and the management at the Drury, those, those individuals, and you can see from the calls, they've been very engaging in partnership of how we can work together as good business owners. In terms of any of the other hotels, no one has overly extended themselves to engage us. Maybe across the street with the Spring Hill Suites as well in the Hampton. I think they've, they've been individuals who have engaged us for positive reasons as well. But other than that, they're in their lane and they're very focused on it and we've chosen our silos accordingly.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Homier, too, for working so hard to appropriately tailor this to be effective and also not to hurt, not to unintentionally hurt other business owners or like the assisted living center, other places that need public safety, but really to focus on the, essentially the, proactively the offenders, I guess. The actual property owners who are profiting off this business.
Well, you can see from both the purpose and findings supported by the data that we were provided by both fire and police. I mean, there is a problem with, with particular sets or subset of hotels. Now, you know, all of them are subject to the same licensing requirement. And so, they'll have to go through the same licensing inspections. However, I expect that, you know, there's a substantial monetary penalty because of the subsidization by the rest of your taxpayers for those emergency services. And it's borne out by the data and the facts. That's why it's 100 and some pages long.
We know it took a lot of time, so very much appreciate it. And that was a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by every single other trustee, but we'll give it to trustee Nordhook. Two.
Consider approval of the introduction of hotel licensing ordinance.
Thank you. Clerk Slater, please call the rule.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lusprance.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Article 10, having no discussion items, we'll go to public comment. Anything on tonight's agenda or not?
Can I just interrupt real quick?
Oh, yes, please.
One of the things we didn't decide, which will be important for the notice of posting, is when it will be considered for adoption. So, we need to make that decision for notice purposes.
Comfortable with the meeting Jade, will you be gone, will you?
You'll be gone, but you'll be-
As long as we have some legal representation.
We went through those, I mean, the bulk of the information tonight, so that should just be a, a process step of just approving.
Okay. And what is the-
They wouldn't need a lot of discussion.
Okay.
May 8th, that is.
Yeah.
Do we know, do we have enough time, Mike? We can even make it May? For the public notices that are required?
Yeah, actually, the only public notice is a, what we call a notice of posting, which will be published and put on your website because there's no public hearing required.
So we're adding May 8th to the-
Let's plan on that if that works for your schedule.
Yeah, it works for me.
All right. And if something comes up, we can bump it back. Back to public comments. Sir Whitley.
Yeah, this is the real reason I, I came tonight and the last meeting was the most uplifting, feel-good moment I've ever seen at one of these meetings, when Chief Majors was, you know, talking about the assistance he was providing to people and whatnot. That, it made me feel good as being part of the community. I'm going to try to blackout, block out this last half hour that I spent in here today. And it really puts a damper on what I was trying, trying to say. But be, because of the, the, the very, very uplifting story from Chief Majors of last meeting, I decided to come back here because there is a lot of credit due, you know, to the township, you know, that, you know, they were saying that, you know, they were, had this response system. They had a, a process. They didn't just have a, a hope or even a plan. They had a process, you know, where they would, would, would do certain things. And, you know, my intent was to, to thank the board, you know, and everyone that supports that process. And, and not only that, you know, anyone in the past that, that was, was part of getting the township to caring and, and, and doing, doing good, you know, for people. He, he talked about the three steps that might happen if assistance, you know, was needed, where either they could do it, you know, take care of themselves, and then they could use their standing to call off an ambulance or notify the hospital that, no, there's not someone coming in. You know, the, the township's standing was definitely, you know, a positive thing there. If the call went kind of as expected and then you had to wait for an ambulance, there was someone there that should hold your hand that, you know, got you through, you know, this waiting time.
Or, or start chest compression.
The, 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 the third one was if this was really a much worse thing, the township again would use their standing to call the ambulance, call the hospital, whatever, to escalate and, you know, and get, get additional help. And so, the thing that struck me from last meeting was that help starts here at the township level. You know, there's a representative from the township, you know, that's here. And so, as part of that, I had a little plaque made up. Help starts here, Cascade Township.
Sir Whitley.
It, it was, it was extremely, you know, touching, you know, for the, the meaning, you know, what they had last time. So-
That's a great place for it, right there with the public engagement and the community.
We, we can put it here, whatever.
People might be a little bit nicer before they-
Yeah, but, you know, realistically, there, there are, there are so many times that, you know, you know, people come to you or they, they call 911, whatever, you know, they're looking for help and, and hopefully we're a community that cares and, and help does start here. So, you know, whether you're, you've lost the PFOS lottery and you have this, your wells are contaminated, you know, they can't reasonably go to the EPA or something like that. They, they kinda have to go to you. They can't go to Grand Rapids, you know, city and say, would you please get us some water? They, they have no standing. You as a township have that standing. You can share that resource as a community. And, you know, the help doesn't always end here, but it should start here. And, and that's what I had. And I'm so sorry, I had to listen to the last half hour of, of comments because-
Big riddance is this, we're, we're, help started here on that one too, so.
It, it, it really, it really, you know, took away from the, you know, the emotion that I had of, of, you know, help starts here and, you know, Chief Major, you know, he, he really hit it home of, you know, people come to a township representative and says, I need help. And, and that's, that's all I've got. And I can leave this here and we can turn it around or however you want. But that's why I came tonight. It wasn't for any, you know, other reason, so.
Thank you. The other comments.
Can I just add one thing to, to, it's probably Jade. Thanks Jade. Jade, I like how you lay out the implementation plan in it with, with each case. Because it kinda gives us, sometimes it goes back and says, this was done, this was done, this was done. And here's, and then a timeline going forward of what we're gonna do. So we actually see how it's gonna be executed. That's really helpful. So I appreciate that.
Are you speaking of the ordinance or the planning commission item?
Yeah, reports.
The report. Well, even, even in each case, because we're not, and I'm sure Andrea helped do that too, for, for example, for the ones that she did. You, you lay out a little implementation plan, just a nice little summary, which is great for residents and great for us. Cause you know, here's what we're gonna sign the contract, here's what needs to be done, here's what's gonna- And so, we see that there's a, a to-do plan and some of the prior steps. And that's just really, really nice. When it's applicable for a particular case, you've been adding that recently and I just, I think we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll put that on the board.
Yes, that's, this is what, the board comments are.
Any other comments, either in person or also virtually, on anything? Manager comments.
I have nothing else tonight. We got a lot done, so.
I wonder if there's any board member that has a comment.
No. Thanks for coming. The crowd is getting larger. It's slowly getting larger. But we had a total of 12 people out there in the audience and I don't know how many virtually, but thank you all for attending. Can't always please everybody all the time, whether it's a single property owner or whether it's a special interest group, but we try to look at the township overall and what's best for the residents overall. And Mr. Whitley, thanks for your comments. Just reminding you something that a brigade commander wants you to start all of his staff meetings with? Hope is not a method. It takes action. So thank you, Mr. Whitley.
My apologies for jumping the gun on the comments for Jade. I meant to do it in board member comments.
Oh, it was good though. No worries. Really appreciate all the Director Hendricks, Mr. Stevenson, we've got Manager Smith, Mr. Homier, getting a lot done.
Move to adjourn. Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to adjourn. All in favor? Motion carried, opposed, motion carried.